To the fight of the United States America and to the republic for which it stands, elimination under God, indivisible, with their injustice wrong.
We have some meeting minutes to approve, January 26, 2015, over our regularly scheduled comp meeting minutes. If there is any additions or corrections.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from January 26.
Motion on the floor by Mike, can you get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously, January 26, 2015, public hearing, meeting minutes. Get a motion to have both approved.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Steffi, get a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously, our agenda for the evening. Looks like we got one correction, we wanted to take that electrical rebate proposal off the agenda for the Morrison County shop, that pertains more to Minnesota Power than what the city appears. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? If not, looking for a motion to have the agenda approved.
I make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Steph.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously, first item on the agenda is our city clerk position update, Scott, you want to kind of give the com floor update, how that's going?
Sure, so far we did four applications, turned it in from various people throughout the city, we do, I did contact a few of you for time to set it up, see what worked best, 5:15 on Wednesday, we're going to review applications.
Set this one to?
This Wednesday. 5:15. And then from that point, upon reviewing the applications, we can set up.
Interviews.
Interviews for the 16th to the 19th, in between there.
How long is the post until?
It's till Wednesday.
Till, it's actually posted until Wednesday, so I have the 14 days, and for this meeting on Wednesday, I had posted last week, right, so we are in the posted dates.
Deadline 4:30, so.
It's four o'clock on Wednesday as the deadline.
Any evening, is fine, can anything for next week is fine for me.
And that's February 16 through the 19th.
Through the 19th, so we can, after we review, see how many we want, after we interview, how long the process will be, then we can set up Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, you are bound by, correct?
Right, but Thursday's ladies only, don't confuse.
Yes, that's right, so we want to try and do that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
We'll look at the ladies night, don't confuse.
Party that are whooping.
Would you like to elaborate on that? To leave it at this?
Ladies night, stay in that ladies night.
You had to Vegas.
Right, why would you need to when you live in Pierce?
I guess so.
Okay, anybody got any questions on that position, or how this process is going to continue on? Sounds good. Scotty, you want to take, or explain a little bit about Made in Minnesota, it's a solar initiative?
I received, I do have some information packets, but I, if you actually flip through and get to an email that is from Tara and Katie, I had a chance to talk, so I guess to start off, is someone within our city requested, they were contacted by a marketing firm, is what I'm believing, or I have, pretty much have evidence on that, that about doing solar, converting over to solar.
Mm-hmm.
They are a business in town, anyway, I guess that was the first time I've ever been approached by them, so I reached out to Minnesota Power, our provider, and they were still kind of agreeing on it as well, but just to explain, so as, as a retailer to electric, companies can request solar rebate, and that's rebate, just like our CIP program, just like we're doing now with our electrical rebates, same concept, but there's a lot of variables in that information, as far as how it can be used, who can actually apply for it, you have to be a retailer, getting it from a wholesaler, and if you read, actually in the second paragraph in that email, it states, Made in Minnesota is a production-based, incentive-funded by the investor-owned utilities, so that's kind of the big word that stands out with this little program. What it is, is Minnesota Power and Excel are both investor-owned, they are investor-owned companies, obviously the city appears is not quite set up that way, so for us to be a wholesaler and to provide something to a retailer, it just doesn't work, but with the IOU, there's, so Minnesota Power, they pay in 5% back to the state for this funding, they have to, just like we have to try and save about one and a half percent, it's the same concept for them, they pay it back. When you look at Minnesota Power, when you look at Excel Energy, being our base is Minnesota Power from pretty much here up top of the state, we're all Minnesota Power, we don't have much Excel around here, but when you look at Excel versus Minnesota Power, Excel is way, way bigger than Minnesota Power, so therefore, the 5% they pay in is a much bigger difference than Minnesota Power, so the people that actually qualify for these solar rebate programs are mostly Excel Energy.
Customers.
Customers.
So, if I understand this right, so the power companies have a mandate, that they have to purchase all the so much renewable energy, in this case being solar?
Yes, and in this case, they have to actually pay it back to the state to apply for rebates, so retailers can apply.
If a company is approved, or an organization is approved, they can actually take the energy that they're producing, if I understand this right, and basically, the way that would work, that would be, that amount that you sold to Minnesota Power, that would be part of their percentage that they have to produce more to buy back?
And I'm not too familiar with that, I'm more educated on the financial side and where the money comes from, but as far as how it's, it's pretty much to save them, save their power, obviously use their own power within, but with that being said, I wanted to first off approach you guys, because more likely this is going to come up in the future more and more, but this is kind of the information I have so far, it's very new, as I understand, and what I was told is as things progress into years to come, then this will be more of an option, but how it pretty much works is, they pay into the state, and then, what it is, they get funding for it, so they pay 5% into the state, their customers will go and request the solar rebate, then they can actually build the state back, as far as I understand it.
So if one of our customers goes and does a solar, will they apply to us, or will they apply?
They would have to apply through us, but we wouldn't get any funding, because we're not an investor-owned.
Right, so I guess, so how would we, would we work something out with Minnesota Power?
No, it has to be directly from the retailer, we are the in-between, so the logistics of it would not work, so with that being said, it could only be.
What if we did it?
That's kind of the way you were researching.
We, well, we can do that, but.
Not in this program, I don't think, Mike, but I, yeah, I know what you're saying.
We would have to set something up in some way.
So they wouldn't, there wouldn't be a rebate, this customer of ours who wants to do this, there is not going to be a rebate through the normal channels for these people using this renewable energy?
With the information I was provided, no.
Okay.
As far as I understood, and like I said, we're very green at this, this is just something that came up, and after I talked to Minnesota Power, they stated that there are people marketing solar, just like any other company, trying to, trying to make a living, but this is something that I think will progress into something much more, so just so you are aware of what's going on with solar rebate, that's kind of the information I have right now, but I will try and work with that customer, because I do not believe that they have used our CIP program yet, maybe that'll be an option for the time being, I'm not sure, so that'll be something that I'll work out with my customer, just then.
Sounds good. Pierce, community ed program, I know typically we'll do a donation to that program every year.
It looks like we do 2,000 every year, looking back as far as our system goes, it looks like that's pretty consistent, there's going back, so $2,000 to their, their summer education program. If you look further in, it gives us more detail, so me and I.
Yeah, it's, I don't know, I think it's been a good positive program for the community, it's put on by the school district, you know, it gives kids something to do in the summertime, you know, I mean, the list is, is huge of different things that they provide for our kids, and it's probably a really good deal for our community, I don't know what you guys' feelings are on this, but yeah, I think they're asking, is it 2,000 Scott, or 2,500?
2,000, as far as.
$2 each?
It's $2.
$2 per cap, no?
Yes.
In '09, we gave 2500, but other than that, it's been 2,000.
It's been, it's just that 1,000, yeah.
And 13, 14, something like 2,000.
Yeah, yeah.
And what our budget is for, is that 2,000?
What do you guys want to do?
Does that make a motion and do only 2,000 dollars to it?
It's a motion on the floor by Donnie, can you get a second?
I'd second that.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
These last two, there was 1,300, 1,300, is that what it's?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, or another. Been a really positive thing for our community and for the kids, so I think it's a good investment for us to make, gets the kids up there in the summertime. We didn't have anything else on the actual agenda, we'll go to department reports, Bobby Oak.
I guess just more open for questions, just a little bit of snow we've been having, so not a lot going on there, but.
Have a nice reprieve from last year.
Yeah, it's been okay.
Tonight might be another storm.
Tonight might get some snow, other than that, there's not a whole lot going on, I guess, Donnie and I had a chance to go to the Minnesota Power meeting, and we've been meeting, we had one other meeting with the municipals, just talking about contract extensions, and.
I got your email on that.
Got that email, so, just, we have a meeting scheduled in May for the other municipals again, with Minnesota Power, so if there's any concerns that you would have on the contract end of it, let us know, and we can.
Yeah, I think the only, one of the first questions that came to mind, I mean, without them in this big can, is, I know they were, you know, looking at maybe a contract extension.
They are, yeah.
And was that at the end, at 2019, or was that now, a commitment now to extend?
They wanted, they would like a commitment now to extend beyond 2019, and that's immediate to time.
Yeah, it's something we should really sit down at a workshop and kind of go through, so everybody can understand the details of that, and how that all.
Yeah, there's a lot of information that we've gotten from them in the last two meetings.
Yeah.
There's several towns that are all, cities that are all together in this.
Right.
So, as a collective group, we're trying to move as a collective group.
Absolutely, no, there's more power numbers, that's for sure, yeah, but if we could sit down and just kind of run through, you know, some of that, you know, things that they're proposing, and get your guys' feedback on how you think we should proceed, you know, it's going to be important, so, yeah.
Yeah, our next step, I guess, would be a electrical meeting, if we wanted to do that.
Yes, I do want to schedule that, because they have some other stuff to cover, so it's, even if we meet on Wednesday, half an hour before, I'll just go over a couple things.
And then, we want to get, at some point in time, Scott, after you guys meet, to come up with some consensus, maybe what you want to do is, is schedule a workshop, and anything else that happens in fall, that we need to get to work on.
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah, it'd be kind of nice to sit down and just run through that whole.
Just as an FYI, our main contact, Dan, he's out until sometime in March.
Right, second.
So if you want to get him to any meetings or anything like that, he's not available until March 2nd, so.
It'd be nice if we could, if we could have this meeting, I think.
Just to review the contract amongst ourselves.
Yeah.
Look at what we're looking for, and get the logs in, but.
Right now, they've set up, they have four, I think, or five people, that are working with Minnesota Power over our contract, so, we don't actually, we and Bob and I haven't actually seen what our contract is, they talked about no rate increase for two years, or 18, and 3% every time.
Yeah, see, I wasn't sure if that rate increase was going to take effect as soon as we would take and enter into the contract, or if that would stretch out till after.
When they were talking that day, it would lock us in at nothing until 2018, and after that, it was 3%, no matter what, right now, it's a, it's a hit and miss, sometimes it might be 6%, next year might be nothing, so.
Well, we've seen it happen for quite a while.
But that's what they're talking about, is so what happens if we lock it in for a long period?
Yeah.
It's good for the cities at the beginning, but could be worse at the end, so we don't know.
Okay, well, sometimes after you guys sit down, once you look up with Scott and schedule.
Sometimes we want to do that.
If you want to do 4:45 on Wednesday, and Bob is actually on the tree.
Sure.
It'll just, it'll just be some briefing over the meeting and stuff like that, so.
So we don't have a paper contract to look over?
No, I mean, this meeting we just had was more negotiations, not even negotiations, but just information sharing.
Just ideas, or what they're kind of proposing?
So they wanted feedback now, between now and May.
So in May, when we meet with the other municipals again, we should have some more solid.
We should have some good ideas on what we want in the contract.
Good, good.
And then we're going to meet this week as a solid waste committee, and we'll set up the.
Correct.
Clean-up day, and discuss, we'll discuss that, and.
So, solid waste committee, we're going to meet as a group on the 12th at 11 o'clock.
Okay, is Matt going to be available for that, he's on solid waste, isn't he?
Yes, I did send an email, like I said, I haven't really contacted him this week, so, but I did send him the information.
Well, is Matt the only one from the council that's on?
No, Steph is.
Well, you can make that meeting, Steph?
We'll set up so I could.
Oh, good.
Yeah, as long as there's a council member there.
Yep, Steph will be there, I and Bob, Mary Corf, and then I haven't had a chance to, because of Harold either, I don't know, he's got the.
Oh, Harold's on that too, isn't he?
Yeah, at large, I am in Mary at large, so, there'll be a good place there, but so just to make sure we're clear on that, solid waste committee meeting, the 12th at 11.
Then we had Minnesota Power come in, and they replaced one pole, and of course, it's part of our pool, that got rejected during inspections, and a couple other jobs that came in and did, so it's been kind of a nice start to.
Yeah.
Get them on board.
Everything's been working good?
Excellent.
Good, good.
Good communication, I mean, they're coming through town, and they, I see them drive around the different line and come through, and kind of get a feel on where everything is.
Good.
They've been very professional about it.
Good, good, it's nice to see their, show some initiative and everything, that means a lot.
Yeah.
So, that's all I had.
Thanks, Bobby Oak.
Thanks, Bob.
Oh, Bob, I got a special project for you.
Oh, oh, man.
The night of our fire department benefit, I want you to hook up with Lynn.
That sounds bad, I just went right there, that sounds bad.
No word, no choice of words, hook up, it's not a door, it's your wife.
Get together.
Going downhill. Talk to the wife.
Yeah, we got some financial stuff, and that maybe you could, you could help her in another firefighter, maybe keep track of all the financial stuff that, all that even, that's, good job, pretty good, thanks, Bob.
Much for your job.
Chief Henneken.
I don't have nothing, Mayor.
Everything's going good?
Does he have questions for me, going really good?
I see we have some new speed monitoring signs.
We do, yes.
Electronic?
Recording all you guys who go by, so.
I mean, I came home from Covert's today.
Hi, Doc, that one's gone.
They don't record, I mean, it's just, it gives me data, but it's, there's no photos or nothing, they are good, I've had a lot of good report from the community, I put, I took the one from 25 South, I put on Park Avenue tonight.
Okay.
The Colony Workshop, the public work, they came around and changed all the sign, pole signs for me today, so just great, great work from them too, so it's, I think it's a, it's a great thing for City appears.
It is.
The data we're getting off of there, you know, we talked about, you had a request for a stop sign over on Red Ed Vincent, we're going to put something up over there, that'll be.
Next rotations, yep, but it's just, you could do a two-week, a three-week, a seven-day.
So what, it just collects how many vehicles go through, and the speed?
The slowest, the average, and the highest, within that seven or 14 days, can we print out a chart, I can send it to you guys, and we'll review it from there.
Good.
I suppose there's really no concerns at my end, or I have my one three reported at the end of the month.
They're granting a motor, is anybody interested in using?
Bon Prairie showed up today to grab one, Chief Shermer's is coming for City of Little Falls, and also the Sheriff's Department has already sent me paperwork for to ship all three of them, I'm always going to keep one or two utilized for the city appears, something with the grant.
Yep.
I'll keep gives on to them, and go from there.
Thanks for heading that up, Chief.
You're welcome.
Okay, a few things, item number one, I was moved to Wednesday, Thursday instead of Tuesday, Wednesday, due to weather, but the city society is moving out, maybe there's going to be potential snow and ice rain and stuff like that, so I'll be working those two days on that. Just to run it by you, because we did increase it, our small cities fund, we do have another project that is in the works, they increased it from 37,500 is our max, to 40,000, so it's just a little difference there, we are getting that from Department of Commerce, the full $40,000 in all, for the project, plus.
Residential or commercial projects?
The commercial project.
Commercial project.
So just an FYI, being I did increase that, I want to run that to council, and that'll be another small cities program that we'll be working with, then, President's Day, office is closed, so just as an FYI, so next Monday, the office is closed, and I was contacted from a member of our community, they want to do, and Eric might, and also Bob probably know a little bit, they want to do a fundraiser slash a turkey trot, I guess is kind of what it's called, it's like a color run, is what it technically is called, for Susan Hoheisel. I'm not sure when they're going to be doing this, but they just wanted to reach out to the city first to see if it's okay, they are going to be doing, it's called the color run, so I did try to get some information on that, what it is, I believe they throw colors, it's cornstarch and, geez, cornstarch and food coloring, so it washes right out, but it looks like.
It's like a U as you're running.
Any, so you see like.
They, they do this as a fundraiser in a lot of different communities, and if you look, it's advertised a lot of places, some of my nieces have been involved in them, and they do them in St. Cloud, Brainerd, all over the place, and they do them 5K, 10Ks, whatever, so instead of just a regular race type thing, they turn it into this color run, so along the way they have, I don't remember if it's like they use guns that shoot the powder out at the runners as they're going by, so their clothes end up with multicolored by the time they make it through the whole course, you know?
So I, I did check, the business is like.
It's all color.
It's some sort of, yeah.
It's, it's.
It's just a color ball.
It's, like I say, what, you know, a round barrel.
Commercials on TV, they throw it on the air with their hands.
Yeah, so everything all do it different, yeah.
But in protection to our streets, the only places that color will actually be thrown, or probably be thrown, is Horizon Hall, Flicky's Vet, Holy Trinity, and the high school, and another place possibly, so it's not going to be out in the streets and like, stuff like that, the only thing is, is I did talk a little bit to Eric, we just got to make sure the route we have, you know, we're familiar with the route, and we have people and staff to, to assist when they do that, so, that's an FYI, is there any concerns with that, or anything, so I just wanted to.
I assume they set the route up like they do with the other races, we do around town, and make sure it's only with these guys that have people monitoring and.
That's what I'm thinking as well, okay, then, fire department updates, you want to give a little fire department update in regards to this weekend?
Our firefighter benefit is coming up Saturday night, February 14, yeah, it's a fundraiser that we put on, we haven't done one for a couple of years, this will be our second one, yeah, it's going to be a really fun event, there is all sorts of drawings and things of that nature, yeah, we have our firefighter beauty contest, which nobody is going to want to miss, our officers have been nominated as beauty contestants, and my buddy Todd Promisberger is going to be in there, so if you want to see an ugly woman, that's the place to come, and, yeah, it's, we're going to have a good time, band's planned, so we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna hopefully have a very successful benefit, and, yeah, you're all invited, so make sure you come.
What are those dates again, at times, Tony?
7 o'clock, February 14, doors open at 7.
Okay, then, we did mention setting up an admin committee meeting, but realistically, should we probably wait until after interviews?
Yeah.
Just because of.
Get that right, unless one of the other council members wants to sit in on, I mean, is it something we can deal with right away, or?
In regards to what we talked to you the other day, it's kind of up to, I guess, it's not that pressing of an issue, I guess, I would request to do it after the interviews, that way.
And.
So should I table that until the next week?
Sure, unless you feel like something that we need to deal with.
And, okay, so I'm going to table that, and then.
Something we can talk about, too, when we're reviewing apps, I mean, if we're going to appoint a new clerk, maybe a couple of us step up to the plate on some of these other committee deals or whatever, just to help out, I don't know, you know?
That's something we should sit down and talk about, and, you know, all depending on the applicant, or whatever, you know, maybe it's.
Well, there's a lot to go, take in.
A lot to work with, but that's.
And one last thing is, you'll see claims, I had to update the claims as of today, some stuff came in, and you can't potentially wait that long to get signed, so I printed them out, so when you review the claims, review the ones that are for you, not on your tablets, that's all I have. Probably all of them tomorrow, this is, that's all I can tell you.
Okay, you guys want to deal with the claims, and then we'll come back to treasurer's report?
The closing checkbook balance on January 31st was $822,740 entered, there are no.
Linda, get a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
I make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Steffi, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously, claims for the month, you guys have any questions on the bill, or not, if it's a proposal, we'll have those approved.
That's the one I brought to, I brought the sales and the staffs.
Oh, is that turning up? Okay, gotcha.
What is rate express for fuel?
That's the squad car.
That's the squad car, that's our card, we have that every month.
We have that every month, how many years?
Right, well, what do you mean, right, it was listed as a cop car.
Cause that's the company, man.
Doesn't it come charge call?
It comes in as WEX. It really should be W E X.
Don't feel bad, Mike. I guess every other, I'm looking at something that I'm going, hey, I've never heard of that before. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I make a motion to, uh, pay the monthly bills for a total of eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and nine cents.
Motion on the floor by Mike to pay the bills, can you get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie, all votes in favor, please. Signified by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Anybody else have anything?
We got Jim.
Oh, hi Jimmy.
Hi.
Update on your project at all or?
Well, I spoke with several of you during the week because of before, and I guess. Thought maybe it was gonna be on the agenda if it was, if somebody had any particular questions, I would try to answer them. We did, uh, come across a little bit more money from the Plate Lake Association. They came across with a couple thousand, so we're getting pretty close to our goal. A little bit to go ahead.
Is. That's something that the council still wants to look at, you don't wanna look at.
I'd like to do something as far as, you know, like the restoration of work or whatever we can do to upgrade the park, you know, that. Ties into it, but really doesn't tie, you know what I mean?
You know, if, if, just so there's no misunderstanding about how this ordinance and things work. And I don't know if we just, we're not that clear about it or whatever, but. We could take and donate to, let's say, to the contractors, we could donate directly to the memorial. Things of that nature. If we don't wanna put it in an account, um, or anything like that, even though statute does, does A P A. You can still take and donate to the, to the project, uh, directly. And that would also give the city ownership, or at least partial ownership of the project as well, so.
Well, I think last time when Freddie was here, one of the questions that Matt had was who was gonna own it when it's done. And, and I think Jim had said that the intent was it was gonna be a city monument, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. This is, this is, this is not a legion monument in any way, shape or form. There'll be no mention of that on there. It really was for the veterans, all veterans, whether you're legion or not. And, uh, it really had kind of hoped that it was a city veterans memorial. And, uh, and I really, we had hoped that if it was on city property, we looked around a few other places, but that seemed like the most logical place, if you put it that way. And, uh, uh, that it would be taken care of by the city. Now, I don't believe that there's a huge maintenance cost in a, in a slab of granite, but there is yard around it. And we had hoped that the, the city would, would help with the landscaping around it and like, like they do on the Father Pierce Memorial.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. There's no.
I guess that, that was, that was our intent. It's not our intent to own it in any way, shape or form, you know?
Like I said, I guess the city would, would go forward with donating towards the project. And we would make the payments via to the contractors or directly to the monument itself. I guess, where was it ordered through?
It was ordered through a, a company in St. Cloud.
Okay.
And we've, we've, we're committed to it.
Yeah.
Because we, we paid half of it already and it's supposed to arrive this month. And then they would have it done, hopefully, our goal is to have it completed by Memorial Day. That's, that's our current goal. And we've already put half the, we already put half the money down on it, so it's, it's gonna go someplace. And, and we had hoped for some support from the city, but not a huge dollar amount, but, but at least in some sort of.
I think no matter how we go about doing it, if the council decides they wanna donate for the project, I still think we need to, to adopt the ordinance or we're legal to go about doing it.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I know we have the ordinances written up. We had the first part that I leave, that we had tentatively before we decided to table it, that we went ahead and approved regarding the monument itself. Then what we needed to decide, there was two other ordinances there that we needed to pick one or both of them. One was to donate for the monument itself, and the other one was to donate for.
Landscaping.
Landscaping type thing, the resolutions. And so I guess I think that we need to, my opinion, we go ahead and do our ordinance, our resolutions, you know, come to an agreement, whatever. Um, you know, I think that regardless, we're into the landscaping regardless. It's in our park, they donated to our park. I, you know, I go back and forth, but I do think we need to donate some money also to the monument itself, whether it's five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, whatever. Um, you know, we have other entities we're donating to along the way. We're donating to the, what did we donate to last time? The, the fairgrounds, we're donating to our community ed, we're donating to these things. I think we need, need to donate something towards our veterans also, you know, again, um. And, and I guess I just, you know, like I said, we adopted, tentatively adopted that ordinance. Um, I think we need to go ahead and adopt the resolution of the landscaping, I guess, to me is neither here nor there. That resolution is in our park, we're gonna do landscaping. I think we need to make it, it's, yep.
Well, yeah, when I'm speaking of landscaping, we actually, after this Plate Lake thing this last week, we have enough cash for the monument itself. And what we're looking for money for the rest of it now is to put in the sidewalk, make it similar to the one, or not similar, the same. As the one that goes over to the Father Pierce Memorial and a patio in front of it, which would be similar to that, and a foundation for it. And, uh, last fall, Chris Young looked at, he's the one that did it for the other one. And at that time, he said, uh, twenty-four hundred dollars for that, and so we don't have that all covered yet. But, and when I'm saying landscaping, I'm not sure if you're interpreting that as just putting the black ground around it, seeding the grass. But I'm saying if you need and help with that part of it for now, that would, that would, would clear us up.
And to me, this, the, the black dirt and the seeding and the whatever, to me, that, the city, that's the part of our park. To me, I guess then when I, I'm looking at the lighting of the sidewalk, the addition, you know, as part, however you wanna look at it. But I guess to me, I'm, you know, make a motion that we donate towards finishing up the work.
First of all, I think what we need to do is go back to that ordinance, right?
Correct. Well, first of all, should we, I mean, Bob, do you have any questions on that or?
I mean, the landscaping is gonna be minimal as far as cost wise to the cities.
And the state one.
And you're gonna cut.
But Jim's talking about that.
You're gonna cut the grass in the park regardless. You're not gonna just.
You have a spot, right?
Right.
Less grass.
I'd like to know if the city's gonna own it or not, I mean, if we're gonna.
Well, I think, I don't know, I, I think if you wanna be clear, if we want, as a city, wanna be clear about the way the ordinance is gonna be, is drafted. What the statute says or does not say, um, regarding ownership. I think if we're gonna donate, the best way to do it would be to donate towards the monument. We pay a certain amount to the monument, um, and whatever money you have left, you can take and do whatever you want with the sidewalks and the landscaping.
Well, yeah, we could certainly work that either way, but, you know, that doesn't, we put the money to that or over there, that's all under the same.
But, but the group's intent is once the monument is, is in place, the group's intent.
Part of the city.
The group's intent, when the monument is in place and all set up, the group's intent was to donate it to the city, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the city would own it regardless then?
And if you need some kind of formal agreement, I mean, I, we have our meeting again this Wednesday night. And if I get back, we'll certainly discuss that and we can, if we need to come up with some formal statement, some paperwork, I don't know, whatever you do. To make it official, that it's officially, the cities, we're doing this for all I care. We're just doing it for the city.
Well, it's, it's, it's.
The cities all along, we're just doing it, we're donating this money to the cities and if.
Right, right. So the resolution can be to do the groundwork or the resolution.
Or then to whatever that other one is, yeah.
The groundwork would end up being what he was talking, it would be all the sidewalk and everything else, which would be about twenty-four hundred bucks.
The sidewalk and the lighting and the.
See, okay, so we, we, but the thing is, and this was the thing that was brought up at the last meeting, is. The money needs to be paid directly to that contractor that is doing the work.
Right.
Either that or.
Well, it can be broken down into two ways.
Right, either that or we're gonna have to take and donate it to, and, and write a check to the monument company. And I guess that's a part I'm trying to get through, so.
So the thing is, okay, so first of all, the reason I brought, okay, so there's, we can do the, we, obviously we'll do the ordinance, we'll set up the ordinance. Step two then is either or is how we presented it at first. Uh, the reason I brought Bob into the mix is because technically if we were to do the sidewalks and the concrete work and everything like that, that comes out of public work, works.
Out of the parks and that kind of item.
That's coming out of, that's coming out of his budget line. Um, so we can, we can do it that way, or we can, the city council authorizes X, Y, and Z, whoever that will be. To construct the memorial for the veterans. So we need a proper name to install on this paperwork and then they can construct it. And then we give them X amount of money that whatever you decide you wanna give them, so.
Maybe it'd just be cleaner to do the first one, go with the park, you know.
Exactly.
Well.
Cause the whole problem with.
Okay, but that's gonna, that's gonna knock two thousand, twenty-four hundred dollars out of Bob's perk budget if you do that. So and he doesn't have any extra money in his perk budget.
There's money there for improvements. We try to do a little project every year in the park.
Just understand if we're over, that's why. That's pretty much what it comes down to.
Well, yeah, and I, I don't wanna take away from another park project if you have something planned.
It's a park improvement. I mean, it's a good improvement. It's a good project.
Yeah, and that's why, like I said, if Bob's comfortable with it, then heck, yeah, but.
But I wanna know who owns it, so if there is maintenance issues, where other sidewalk or whatever it is, there's always.
And the statute doesn't say who has to own it. That was an opinion.
Yeah.
Um, kind of off the wall opinion.
So I don't think we have a title or a deed on the.
Father players one, you know?
Normally we ever have any of that kind of money.
And, but it's same thing, they donated the statute to the city.
Right. Correct, and I think, you know, I mean, not to open another, but if it is under city, then it can fall under the liability of the city and like that and stuff. I mean, people crawling on it and stuff, I mean, then it's governed by the city rather than, than going after the veteran's bug or, you know, whatever. So, um.
So Scott, what do we need to?
Yeah, we need to get the next meeting, get the ordinance adopted. The, the ordinance is here in front of us if we wanna adopt it now.
Good.
So I did bring it along, um, all we need to do is we can make the ordinance number zero two zero nine two zero one five dash zero one.
I'd make that motion to adopt that ordinance, so.
I'll second that. There is a motion, but I'd like to adopt that ordinance. Seconded by Donnie, I would call for a rule call, because it's an ordinance change, so, Mike?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Donnie?
Aye.
Myself, yes. The ordinance is adopted. I think at the next meeting, do you want to take a look at the, um, actual resolutions?
Do you have those present?
You have the resolutions there as well?
So it needs to come down to if you guys wanna do both or either or or. Um, and I, like I said, we have this on the agenda, so I just have paper copies in front of me.
Well, we need to come up with a dollar amount first of all.
Correct.
So, um.
So with the, with the first one, we're saying we're doing the sidewalks and doing all of that, that has to have a dollar amount coming out of Bob's?
I don't think so, yeah. Um, there is no actually, there actually isn't a, a vote, but we can.
As long as it's under.
It's under our accounts, so it doesn't.
So when we first talked about donating two thousand, we could say two thousand dollars worth of.
Yeah.
Right, but the thing is, just like Jim was saying, if, if it, you know, we get a bid for twenty-one hundred bucks, I mean, we're not gonna turn it down for that hundred dollars.
Right now, the bid right now is about twenty-four hundred dollars.
Well, our intent was, when you were talking about two thousand dollars the other day, our intent would be clearly to pick up the rest of that if it's twenty-five hundred or twenty-eight hundred or whatever it is. I mean, uh, the legion isn't quite broke yet and. And we hope that we have that much money until we all die, although I'm one of the younger ones. It may have to be as long as you think, but, but I know our intent was clearly to, to, to make it, to, to finish it. I think we're getting pretty close to having enough money at this point if, if you put in two thousand to make that, to make that go. Otherwise, uh, we hope to do a few more fundraising things to.
Well, let's do them all, not to exceed two thousand dollars, if they're, they're gonna have the.
Right, so if you guys agree on two thousand dollars, then I'm requesting that, I bring this to the next council with us, so I can put that.
Yep, I agree, yeah, I agree.
And for right now, I'll do the ordinance.
Okay, that sounds good.
And then I'll have it, so you can sign it next week or next week.
That sounds good, Scott. Anybody else have any other business? I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Motion on the floor by Donnie.
Second.
Seconded by Mike, all votes in favor, please. Signified by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.